Make again our city better and our community greater. Thank you for this city. We ask your blessing upon mankind everywhere. Bless each and every one of us. We do ask in the perfect and precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus to Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Good evening. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated.
Pastor Dumas, thank you so much for leading us in our. Reverend Derek Maurice Dumas, born October of nineteen seventy-two, parentage of late Mr. Moses Dumas Junior and Geraldine Floyd Dumas. He was educated in Bibb County Public School, baptized at an early age in Mount Vernon Baptist Church in Macon. Active member and participated in church Sunday School Bible activities. Attended Georgia College and State University in Milledgeville and received a Bachelor of Science degree in public administration. He furthered his education in Turner School of Theology, Southern Christian University in Montgomery, Alabama, where he earned a Master of Science degree in Christian ministry. Prior to entering the ministry, Reverend Dumas served faithfully as a deacon at Greater Lizzieboro Baptist Church in Macon under the leadership of his grandfather, the late Reverend Moses Dumas Senior. He traveled nationally with his grandfather and was well-known in Baptist circles as an astute workshop facilitator and Baptist hymn leader. Reverend Dumas is involved in the local community. He's a member of General Missionary Baptist Convention of Georgia, National Baptist Convention USA, and Lambda Phi Alpha Chapter, Lambda Phi Chapter of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity. Reverend Dumas, thank you so much for giving us that wonderful invocation. And our pledge of allegiance was led tonight by one of our GCAPs students. GCAPs stands for Georgia Civic Awareness Program for Students. And there are about thirty individuals that have participated this year. They come from public, private, and homeschool students from all across Bibb County. Tonight, Grant Alexander is with us. Grant, thank you. He's a senior at Howard High School, where he has held the highest average in English and language arts for two consecutive years. He's been on the honor roll for all of his life and has been nominated for the Governor's Honors Program. He is a member of Student Council, FBLA, mock trial, AP Club Section Leader for the Marching Huskies and Team Robo-Bib. He volunteers at Goodwill and Evergreen Baptist Church. Grant believes, quote, "Civic education is one of the most critical but underappreciated topics being discussed and taught among young people. Young people are the future and civic education provides the framework of how society of citizens should cooperate and work together to further themselves and their community," unquote. Grant, thank you so much for being here. We're mighty proud of you and wish you all the luck going forward. Thank you, sir. Next, item on our agenda of the approval of minutes. We had a set of minutes from our pre-commission meeting held April the seventeenth and our regular commission meeting held April seventeenth. Those minutes have been prepared and distributed. Are there any corrections, changes, or additions? If not, can I get a motion to approve at, by selection, your motion to approve? And a second by Commissioner Shepard. Further discussion here, none, all in favor of approval of the minutes? Signify by saying aye. Oppose no. The ayes have it and both sets of minutes are approved. Next, we have some invited guests and a proclamation for the fiftieth anniversary of the Fair Housing Act. I think several members are here from the Macon-Bib Board of Realtors and also Mike Austin is here from the Macon Housing Authority. Will y'all join me, please, down at the podium? Jolynn? How are you? Good to see you again. Absolutely, Mike. I know. No, no, no. This is, this is, this is great. Have a, have a proclamation. Oh, yeah, by all means. Mallory needs to be down here as a realtor. My goodness, my goodness. This is a proclamation from the office of the mayor. It reads as follows. Whereas April the eleventh, twenty eighteen, marks the fiftieth anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing for all who live in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, or national origin, and whereas economic stability, community health, and human relations in all communities are improved by diversity and integration, bringing about positive change for the entire community. And whereas fair housing is integral to the ethical commitment of members of the National Association of Realtors, the Macon-Bib County Housing Authority, and the Macon-Bib County Consolidated Government, it's critical to the ability of all real estate professionals and housing authorities to serve their clients, customers, and communities. And whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness. Now therefore, I, Robert A. B. Rickett, do hereby proclaim April twenty eighteen as Fair Housing Month in Macon-Bib County. An inclusive community committed to fair housing and supportive of appropriate activities by private and public entities intended to provide or advocate for equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents in our community. And witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the Consolidated to be affixed this second day of April twenty eighteen. I'd like to present this now. Jolynn, aren't you President-elect? President-elect and John Kahn, the current president of the Macon Board of Realtors, and the Mike Austin, who's the executive director of the Macon Housing Authority. Let me present this to you along with my appreciation for all that you do to support and improve fair housing. Thank you. Would you like to say a word or two?
No.
No.
Thank you very much, Mayor Commissioners. We, at the Housing Authority, believe in this act. Since it was signed in nineteen sixty-eight, we've made progress. We have much more progress to go. This is a phenomenal day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Mayor. As a representative of the board, we'd just like to say that we'll always be a party too and a proponent of fair housing for all people. And we're proud to represent the real estate community through our local Board of Realtors. And thank you for this day in acknowledging what has been a sad past, that we'll have a very bright future and not be discriminatory in middle Georgia. Anyway, thank you very much, Mayor.
Next, item on our agenda, public comments on agenda items. These are, this is the time for people to talk to us and express an opinion about an item that is on the agenda for action tonight. So that by giving you the opportunity to talk first, you talk to us before we vote. People that are here and have signed up to talk to us on non-agenda items will be recognized later in the program. Well, we, we, we have a question. Monja Rutland, do you want to talk to us about an agenda item or a non-agenda item? A non-agenda item, good. We'll call on you a little bit later. Next, Gwen Westbrook wants to talk to us about funding for the municipal court. Ms. Westbrook, thank you very much for being here. You're recognized for five minutes.
Good evening to the Mayor and Commissioners. I want to speak a little bit about the fundings for the municipal court being moved to the courthouse. It, it, the, in the agenda, it did say moving to the courthouse. I just want to make sure that we understand that it's supposed to be just be moving to the courthouse, not being combined with state court, because that's a very, that's an issue that I am opposed of. The NAACP is opposed of the municipal court and the state court combining. The NAACP has some issues with state court. We are, have requested information from our municipal court, our research. We've gotten the information from municipal court, but we have had some issues getting that information from state court to do our research. I talked to state court today and they promised me that they would get that to me this week so we can finish compiling the information. Next time that I come before you, I will be able to give you more details and what the reason why we feel that state court should not be combined. But I just want to make it very clear that it's supposed to just be a move to the courthouse, not them being combined, because they are two separate courts. They're actually two state courts, but they, and they handle similar charges, but they're being treated different. They're being sentenced different. So those are some issues that we're dealing with, but we just want to make it very clear that these courts, we do not support these courts being combined, just that they're going to be moved to the courthouse.
That, that is the intention of the resolution, Midwest. But thank you very much for being here. Nobody else signed up to talk for an agenda item, so we'll move on now to reports from our standing committees. First, Operations and Finance Committee, and that report will be given to us by Vice Chairman Watkins. Vice Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, sir. The Operations and Finance Committee met on April tenth, twenty eighteen, and took the following actions. The committee approved the following organization charts for Bowden Golf Course and Business Development Services. The committee approved the following SPOLOX projects. The transfer of two hundred and forty thousand dollars of urban development bond proceeds to the Sheriff's Annex to provide for funds for the purchase of property at five fifty and five eighty Riverside Drive. To appropriate up to ninety-five thousand dollars from the twenty seventeen SPOLOX bond proceeds to provide for funding for additional parking and paving at the Sheriff's Annex. We also appropriated three hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the twenty seventeen SPOLOX bond proceeds to move municipal court to the courthouse. And funding of ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars for an agreement with LaserTurf Southeast for the sodding and grassing of the Bowden Golf Course. The committee approved the following agreements. The purchase and sale agreement with AgPro to purchase a John Deere excavator for parks and beautification in the amount of fifty-three thousand dollars, and the purchase and sale agreement with Fitbit in the amount of eighty-eight thousand dollars, and the approving of a state bank, state bank and trust company contract as the provider of banking services for Macon-Bib County. The committee approved the following transfers. One transfer for thirty-eight thousand dollars from E nine one one Capital Lease Account to Machinery and Equipment Account to replace the E nine one one Main Air Conditioning Unit. The committee also met today, April seventeenth, for a special call meeting, which was the first of many budget hearings. This concludes the report of Operations and Finance Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Watkins. Next is the Economic and Community Development Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Lucas. Chairman Lucas?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and fellow commissioners. The Economic and Community Development Committee was unable to meet on last week because the, of the lift of the other committees. And so we chose to move, to postpone our meeting and to reschedule for next Tuesday. And we hope that since we weren't able to meet on last week, that we will be first on the agenda to meet on next Tuesday. So we will have updates. We have several items of business next week, and then we have updates from Dr. Bombers and Small Business Development Section, Urban Development Authority, Keep Macon Be a Beautiful Commission, and then we are also inviting the Georgia Doom Arena Football Team. We hope to have them here. They have some things to pass out to us, and they now have a two-and-one record. And we encourage support for them. So just wanted to let you know that we expect for everybody to be here on next Tuesday for the next meeting of Economic and Community Development.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. Next is Public Safety Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Shepard.
Well, it's a short agenda. We just had one item on the agenda, and that's where the committee heard a presentation regarding streetlights, cameras being used to enforce traffic laws in Macon-Bib County. And that concludes our report.
Thank you very much, Chairman Shepard. Finally, Facilities and Engineering Committee. Chairman Watkins, will you give that report forth, please, sir?
Thank you, sir. And while the Operations and Finance Committee apologizes for the length of our meeting, I don't know about y'all going first. Facilities and Engineering Committee met on April tenth, twenty eighteen. The committee approved the closure of a portion of Mercer Road located between Mercer University Drive and Sherwood Drive, and authorizing the sale of point five-two acres of, of fair market value, of land, excuse me, for the fair market value of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred dollars. The committee also approved revising section twenty-four dash three of the code to provide for non-emergency closures of county streets, alleys, sidewalks, and facilities. And this concludes the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. There are ten applications for alcoholic beverage sales that have been submitted. Each of the ten applications is accompanied by all of the requisite documentation that we require, business license services to indicate that the appropriate fee has been paid, zoning compliance, a certificate, a measurement form from the engineer's office to certify that the establishment is the appropriate distance away from other prohibited structures, churches, schools, et cetera, as well as the ad that ran in the Macon Telegraph, and the sheriff's report of a satisfactory background check on the applicant. So each of the ten of these applications has all of that documentation. So I'll just read the, the application. The first is John R. Jones on behalf of Circa, located at forty-four twenty Forsyth Road. It is for, it's a new owner, and it's for liquor mixed drinks, beer and wine, as well as a catering license to, at that location. The second is Darmin Desai at Amoco Food Store, located at twenty-five seventy-nine Emery Highway. And it is for beer, packaged sales to go at that location. The third is Anna Hernandez. Business name is BB twenty-nine LLC, doing business as the Vineville Food Mart. They're at thirty-two twenty-four Vineville Avenue. It is for beer and wine packaged sales to go from that location. Next is Charlie Cox Junior on behalf of Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC, located at one twenty Tom Hill Senior Boulevard, Suite one hundred. It's also a new business, and they are applying for liquor mixed drink license and beer to be consumed on the premises. The fifth is Prakash Raminal Patel at the Hilltop Store Incorporated, doing business as Hilltop Food Mart. It is for beer and wine packaged sales to go at that location. The next is Tujest Gazal, located at twenty-four, the business name is twenty-four hundred Lucky Food Mart LLC, located at twenty-four hundred Second Street. That is for beer and wine packaged sales to go from that location. Item G is Janesh Patel. Business name is Joy, J O I. Joy is Pick Twenty Seventeen LLC, doing business as Joy's Pick. It's at thirty-six ninety-one Spencer Circle in Macon. That is for beer and wine packaged sales to go from that location. Item H is Ruben Peck, the Macon Beverage Company LLC, on San Carlos Drive. That is a wholesale distribution license for beer and wine, I believe. And the last one is Jerabim Namish Patel, doing business as Hilltop Liquor, Inc. That's at forty-four ninety Riverside Drive, and that is for liquor, beer and wine packaged sales to go from that location. I'm sorry, there is, the, the tenth one is Ron John Gifford Ledisma Golf. The business name is Go Mart Incorporated, doing business as Chevron at twenty-six fifty Riverside Drive. That is for beer and wine packaged sales to go from that location. The committee of the whole reviewed these applications and voted to approve all of these license applications. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the issuance of these licenses as requested, signify by saying aye. Oppose no. The ayes have it, and those licenses will be issued as requested. That brings us now to old business. And item A is an appointment for a new director as Shelter Manager of the Department of Animal Welfare. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bib County Commission to appoint Tracy Ballou as the Shelter Manager for the Department of Animal Welfare and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution to appoint Tracy Ballou as the Shelter Manager, signify by saying aye. Oppose no. Got one no? One no, Commissioner Watkins? The ayes have it, and Ms. Ballou is confirmed. Tracy, would you stand as we say thank you for your willingness to, to serve? And that's a very difficult job, but we appreciate what you do and we look forward to working with you. Thank you very much. Next is a, an ordinance to amend the organizational chart at Bowden Golf Course, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bib County Commission to amend the Bowden Golf Course organizational chart to add the clubhouse division, which consists of a golf professional, and to provide for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, this is an ordinance. All in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Oppose no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is a resolution of support for a new organization, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bib County Commission to express support for the I seventy-five Central Corridor Coalition, Inc., and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance to amend the organizational chart of the Department of Business Development Services, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bib County Commission to amend ordinance O dash seventeen dash oh oh four nine of June twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, adopting FY two thousand and eighteen budget by amending the organizational chart of the Department of Business Development Services of Macon-Bib County as set forth in section ten dot zero one of the Macon-Bib County Government Policies and Procedures Manual and to provide for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Oppose no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is a, a resolution to purchase some property on Riverside Drive for the Sheriff's Downtown Annex, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bib County Commission authorizing the purchase of property located at five fifty and five eighty Riverside Drive from the Macon-Bib County Industrial Authority for three hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents to authorize and approve the transfer of two hundred and forty thousand dollars of the Series two thousand and thirteen A and Series two thousand and thirteen B Urban Development Authority Bond Proceeds to the Sheriff Annex Project to provide a portion of the funds necessary to purchase said property and for other purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next, item F is an, an ordinance to approve some additional funds for paving of the parking lot next to the Sheriff's Downtown Annex, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bib County Commission to approve and authorize the appropriation of up to ninety-five thousand dollars from the two thousand and seventeen SPOLOX bond proceeds to provide funding for additional parking slash paving at the Sheriff's Annex and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Oppose no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance to appropriate the money to move the municipal court to the courthouse, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bib County Commission to approve and authorize the appropriation of up to three hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the two thousand and seventeen SPOLOX bond proceeds to provide funding to facilitate the move of municipal court to the courthouse and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Jones, got your light on, sir?
Yes, sir. Just want to assure Ms. Westbrook's or any other concerned citizen, this will be two separate courts as it is now. Many of us on this commission fought hard for that. As I hope you know, there would be two separate courts as they are now. They're just going to be in better facilities, which they are overdue and deserve. You're back.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Oppose no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is item H, which is a resolution to execute a purchase, purchase and sale agreement of Bowden Golf Course, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bib County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase and sell agreement with LaserTurf Southeast, Inc. in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars for sodding and grassing of the Bowden Golf Course to be paid by two thousand and eighteen SPOLOX bond proceeds and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval of the committee amendment. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you. I just wanted to say I appreciate the, this is, this Bowden is located in District Three, but it's the municipal, it's all of our municipal golf course. And I appreciate fellow commissioners for supporting the funding for improvements out there. But it's going to be ultimately left up to the citizens to support that golf course. And, you know, if you visit it once it's ready to go, the, all the improvements are made, we still need people to support that entity so that we can justify it remaining a municipal golf course. So I urge approval of this, but just watch the progress out there and please support it. Get kids, they have youth programs out there. Mr. Mohammed Raschen, his, his son received a scholarship and is playing golf at, what's the college? And he played and got a lot of instruction at Bowden Golf Course. So we've got to keep it going, and we've got to encourage our youth to get involved in, in that, that sport. It must be something to it, because my husband can go and stay there all day long chasing that white ball. Some of you up here do that, do that too. But it's not going to survive, just like none of the, the offerings that we have that are recreational in nature, they're not going to survive unless citizens support them. So go see what you're paying for. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the committee amendment, signify by saying aye. Oppose no. The committee amendment to the resolution is adopted. Next is a, a committee amendment to the SPOLOX spending timeline, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bib County Commission to approve the twelfth amendment to the two thousand and eighteen SPOLOX project timeline and budget as presented by the SPOLOX project manager and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval of the committee amendment. Is there further? Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval of the committee amendment, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution with the committee amendment signify by saying aye. Oppose no. The ayes have it and the committee amendment to the resolution is adopted. Next is item J, and it's the purchase of a, a small excavator for parks and beautification. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize and approve the mayor to execute a purchase and sell agreement with Ag Pro LLC for the purchase of a John Deere fifty G compact excavator for parks and beautification in the amount of fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars to be paid from Parks and Beautification Capital Improvement Budget and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose no. The ayes have it, the, the resolution is adopted. Next is a, a resolution regarding our wellness program and the purchases from Fitbits. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize and approve the mayor to execute a purchase and sell agreement with Fitbit, Inc. In the amount of eighty-eight thousand dollars to be paid from the Human Resources Wellness Program Budget and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Commissioner Jones, got you first sir.
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm in favor of the resolution. I had a constituent call me and of course we hear all sorts of things, some of them valid, some not valid. But it was a concern as to whether the employees would actually use them. Would they take them to a pawn shop? Will they give them to their kid to take to school? So anyway, I hope our, our new county manager, Dr. Keith Moffett will have some form of accountability as it relates to these Fitbit. Program and it provides an incentive and we all need to be healthier. So I just hope there's some accountability attached to it.
Thank you Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Watkins got you next sir.
And I can answer that question as well, I mean, of, of course the employees are signing the waiver of what they will and will not do with them and selling and would violate that waiver. I'm in addition, it is a GPS locate, so in the event that it's stolen or anything like that, it does have that ability. But our ultimate goal is to incentivize healthy living. We, we've talked a lot about our, our healthcare problems and we've looked for ways to cut funding. Well, not cut funding, but just cut the expense of it. And a great way of doing that, it requires some infor, upfront investment. But we're investing into the healthy living and providing incentives to, to our employees to live healthier and exercise. And this is not coming directly out of our general fund budget, but as part of the allotment that we receive from Blue Cross Blue Shield for wellness initiatives. We currently have wellness initiatives that deal with non-tobacco users as well as making sure you go get an annual physical. Our employees currently get discounts for those items as well. So this is expanding our health, health and wellness program one additional level to actually encourage people to go out and walk. And as, as part of that, we're also providing, it's not a cash incentive, it is a credit. It is a healthcare credit that would defray the cost of healthcare either on their monthly supplement or, or for their copays. So we, we try to, as well as, as well as just added advantage of feeling healthier. But again, I, this is purchasing about six hundred, we've already had about six hundred employees pre-qualify for this is the item that they want and are waiting on. So this is a purchase to allow us to, to begin fulfilling those orders and get this program started.
Thank you Commissioner Watkins, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose no. Got one, one no Commissioner Allen, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item L is a resolution to approve banking services and the selection of banking services. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve State Bank and Trust Company as the provider of banking services for Macon Bibb County in substantially the same form as the heretofore attached exhibit A and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a, an ordinance to transfer money between line items in the E-nine-one-one department of, to repair an air conditioner. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Commission of Macon Bibb County, Georgia to transfer thirty-eight thousand dollars from E-nine-one-one capital lease account to machinery and equipment account to supplement a previously approved capital improvement project to replace E-nine-one-one's main air conditioning unit attached here to as supplemental number eight and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose no. The ayes have it and the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance to appropriate some funds for an additional traffic signal on Allen Road. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve and authorize the appropriation of up to twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars from the two thousand and seventeen SPOS bond proceeds to provide funding for a new traffic signal at Allen Road and Houston Road and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance to appropriate money for our local maintenance and improvement grant program. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve and authorize the appropriation of up to one hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the two thousand and seventeen SPOS bond proceeds to provide funding for the Macon Bibb County L-MIG batch for identified projects and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose no. The ayes have it and the ordinance is adopted. Next is item P, which is the closure of a portion of Mercer Road. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve the closure of a portion of Mercer Road located between Mercer University Drive to Sherwood Drive consisting of oh point five-two acres and to authorize the mayor to execute a quick claim deed and any other necessary documents to convey and effect the sale of said portion of Mercer Road to the Mercer University for the fair market value of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred dollars and for other lawful purposes.
Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is an, an ordinance to provide for non-emergency closure of county streets. But I'm going to call on Commissioner Schlesinger for an update on that. Commissioner Schlesinger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know I'm a bit out of order, but I've been following the broadcast that's on the screens. And I've noticed that we're putting pictures in that are relevant to the items that we're working on. And I really think that's a great thing. So thank you Chris, thank you Rachel for, for doing that, for not only us up here, but for everybody who's watching the broadcast. Oh, Keith, thank you too. I appreciate that. So I don't know who's doing what back there, but whoever it is, it's a great job. Anyway, Mr. Mayor, there, there's been something of a meeting of the minds. And we have really a universal intent and unanimous intent to develop something on street closures that is more comprehensive. And I think that's a great direction to go. So I don't know what is in order here for me to just motion to table this, this item.
As I understand it, a motion to table would indefinitely postpone this. And I think that's the, that's the wish of the, all of the parties. The merchants were here as well as the downtown Macon folks that said they were all going to work together and collaborate on a plan over the next sixty, ninety days. So I think a motion to table would be appropriate just to defer indefinitely any action.
I'll move to table.
Got a, got a motion to table and second by Commissioner Lucas, is there further discussion on the motion to table? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to table this item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. The ayes have it and the ordinance is tabled. That leads us to our final item, which is a, a resolution to repair a sinkhole out along Riverside Park Boulevard. And, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to take steps to address the sinkhole and related drainage problems in and around the county's right-of-way along Riverside Park Boulevard, including installation of a new drainage line for the cost of two hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars payable from two thousand and seventeen SPOS bond proceeds, ratifying the emergency procurement of design services and entering into any necessary agreements or accepting any necessary easements from neighboring landowners and for other purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. That brings us now to new business and there is no new business for me to read at this point. But we anticipate additional items coming down from the attorney's office. Commissioner Lucas, I have your light on now, you have a point of perusal.
No, no, under new business, we should have had a resolution on the fiftieth anniversary of Dr. King's assassination and paying tribute to, did that not? Anyway, we'll, we'll just make sure that we get the copy from Legal because I did receive a copy of it. Oh, okay, so it'll be on the agenda for next week's committee meetings.
Thank you Commissioner Lucas. So as you know then, there, there will be items of new business that'll come down later this week from Legal. The agenda for next week's committee meetings is published on Friday of this week. So be on the lookout and check the agenda published on Friday. And that'll show all of the new items of business that will be referred to various committees for meetings beginning next Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, in the committee meeting room or here in the main chamber if Economic and Community Development has an audience of sufficient size to, to require them to be here. So committee meetings next week. So check the agenda coming out on Friday. That leads us to public comments on non-agenda items. So this is people that want to talk to us about something that was not on the, the, the agenda for action tonight. But these are all people of mine, first is Monja Rutland. Ms. Rutland, yeah, I saw you here, you, you are first up and recognized for five minutes.
Excuse me. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. Bring greetings, Mayor Rickard and the commission, the audience and citizens of Macon Bibb. My name is Monja Rutland. And I'm here in my capacity as a parent and on behalf of other parents as we are deeply appreciative to you commissioners for the support that you have shown our students in the GCAPS program. As a parent with a student in that program, I have observed and am in awe of the opportunities that have been afforded to her and the other students in the program. I mean, it really shows what can be done with, when commitment is given and it occurs throughout the city as not only do they have the opportunity to attend commission meetings, but they've also gone to the fire department, police department. They've had the opportunity to also not just see local government, but state and federal government. And it's just a phenomenal program that brings students from across the city and community together. And as I said, we're deeply appreciative to you all for, for that commitment. While we were disappointed to hear about the resignation of Mr. Coney who, whose commitment and leadership is a part of GCAPS. We know that the seeds that he planted in these youth, and some of them are with us this evening. The seeds he's planted still continue. And they are manifesting themselves in that the students also have an opportunity to travel to Germany at the end of May and to represent the city and county of Macon and Bibb in a human rights initiative. And again, just to thank, and I would like to if I could, recognize two of the students. They're here with us, Boban Patel and Edna Rutland. Stand. And, and Reese Ellis, yes, she played basketball with my daughter. Okay, and Reese Ellis, these three students are representative of the talent and diversity that's in the program. And so again, we thank you all. Thank you for your continued support. And truly this shows that with working together, what can be done here in the city of Macon Bibb. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rutland, we appreciate your comments, appreciate you being here. Next, Ms. Chet Novak. Ms. Novak wants to talk to us about several issues. Thank you for being here, Ms. Novak, you're recognized for five minutes sir.
I hope it's something that can be done permanently about getting that handicap door open. I had to struggle up the stairs to get here again tonight because it was locked. I have several things of big concern and I wish I had more than five minutes because I'd like to say good things about what's going on also. But in five minutes, all I can do is express some serious concerns I have. One is I am so glad that in the five years I've been here, the water has not started percolating up through McCall Road until just the last couple of months. Because if it happened in the wintertime, we would have a ski slope right down into Jeffersonville Road. I've left this message with the council a few weeks ago. I've talked to Macon Water Authority and nobody has even been out there to look at it that I know of. There's water running right down Macon, McCall Road, I mean, on the hillside. We're come right in off of Jeffersonville Road. It's been that way permanently for the last three, four, or five weeks at least. Secondly, I am really concerned, very concerned about this ordinance that was passed regarding the trash. And a couple of my reasons for it are, number one, I cannot seem to get anybody to give me a profit and loss statement on where this is, at my best guess fifteen million dollars is going to go to. That was required to be paid by April first. My fear, I guess, is that it's going to go to other things and that when it comes time to pay the garbage men for picking up our trash, we're not going to have the money for it. And you're going to come to us and say, hey, we need more money to pay the garbage people. More of that concern than that, and this is for the legal person, do we have our counsel here tonight? Is, is our counsel, is our legal person here tonight? Yes? I would like you to investigate just how legal it is to be billing people in vacant houses and not have trash barrels sitting there for them to use. It seems to me whether if the house is vacant and you're going to charge them for it, you should have a ninety-five gallon barrel there for them. So it seems to me there's probably a couple thousand barrels are going to have to get appropriated and get out to those houses in order to make that legal. Lastly, I requested information on the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar bond or two hundred and fifty thousand dollar ordinance that was passed several weeks back again. And I received a copy of the ordinance, but the ordinance referred to quote, two thousand and seventeen SPOS bond proceeds, CY two thousand and eighteen roads and bridges. I asked for a copy of that supporting document so I could see exactly what we're talking about. And I have not been able to receive it for some reason. So I'm wondering why under freedom of information. So I'm wondering why, under freedom of information, I cannot receive the information I want on the profit and loss from the waste department in the town here, why I cannot receive information on how many houses are being billed for trash, and how many are being billed for one barrel, one barrel or two barrels or three barrels, and why I cannot get this supporting information on this two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that was appropriated. And I would like to have that door open so I can get in here without having to huff and puff with my little throw later. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. Sorry about the problem with the downstairs access. We'll try to make a, a note of that and, and let, uh, facilities know to leave that door open. Um, thank you very much, sir. Uh, next, Mr. Glenn Carey. Mr. Carey wants to talk to us about, uh, solid structure buildings, um, and, and other issues, and, and you're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Thank you, mayor. I would like to take this opportunity to give thanks to the governing body for allowing me five minutes, and I would like to take this time to say thanks to everyone in the audience for taking care of your civic duty by being here. At the last commission meeting, I gave handouts. I'm Glenn Carey, I represent, uh, Capadia Incorporated. Um, I'm back again because I simply want to hammer home my main point. We are asking the leadership of Macon Bibb for three buildings. Three buildings that are solid in structure, not to own, but to have access to. And why are we asking for that? Well, number one, two of the buildings will be used for pecans. Pecans that are grown in the state of Georgia, brought here to Macon Bibb to provide jobs for the homeless living in shelters. Building one will be used as a coffee house, and that building will provide some jobs for the homeless. The pecans building will provide one hundred percent of the jobs for the homeless, okay? We are hoping to get the full cooperation of the leadership here in this county. If we can, we will provide employment for one hundred percent of the homeless in Bibb County. Initially, we will provide jobs for those that are in home, in, uh, in homeless shelters, but if we can get the support of the powers here in Bibb County, we will provide one hundred percent of jobs for the homeless. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your comment. Uh, next, Mr. Donald Richardson, got some grassroots reflections he wants to share with us. Mr. Richardson, thank you for being here. You're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Well, you know I do research, so this is from, um, the Flint River Land Company, um, and this is, uh, Article sixteen of that, uh, incorporation. Give you food for stock. It shall be the duty of the directors, and they shall have full power to adopt all lawful means to increase the value and effect sales of the land and other property of the company. And if they deem it expedient, lay off, establish, and build up any town or towns on the land of the company. They shall have power to build all bridges, houses, wharves, and streets which they may judge necessary for the interests of the company. They shall have power, if necessary, to raise money for the purposes of the company by mortgage of the lands of the company. Said mortgage to be executed by the trustees on their order to that effect. They may contract for the sale or lease of any or all lands belonging to the company or other property, all sales or leases, to be executed by the trustees on their order. They may, with the funds of the company and the hands of the secretary, purchase other lands and houses anywhere in the state of Georgia and contract for the sale of the same to the company. And in all cases of purchase, the deed of conveyance shall be made to the trustees of the company and upon the trust declared in this indenture and no other, always keeping in view and endeavoring to attain the object of this association. They shall manage, control, and administer all the office and official and prudential concerns in the company in all cases, not here and otherwise specially provided, for but subject and in all matters mentioned in the article to the order of the stockholders, given in any legal meeting and in a legal manner. The reason why I've been studying this, uh, uh, this land company, right after the Native Americans were dispossessed of the land, you had a group of these land barons who went up and bought all this land along the Flint River and all, and all counties. And so, this inherent wealth from the white and the sanctum, the power lies in the fact that social, there are socioeconomic, political, uh, connections that they have developed from the powers vested in this land. So when I look at the situation that's going on here, particularly where someone from the white and the sanctum asked me, he said, why are these black boys around here, uh, just out of control? I said, well, yes, the half has never been told because unfortunately, some of the founding fathers dealt in the rackets. And a Jack Core lawyer once told me that crime is breeded, and so if you didn't have crime, you wouldn't have need for the legal system. So what they did over the years, unfortunately, uh, through black people, they utilized a lot of the black labor through organized crime, and as a result, over the years now, it's gotten out of hand. So this is part of the problem. So, um, I was always told by going back and searching the records, that you can see how the, uh, how things evolved. So these, uh, these men not only had property interests here, but they were part of the seven percent of the South that controlled all the natural resources, and they had their international properties all over the world, and what I've discovered, that all this time then with the New World Order during the time of the Olympics, is, I know what's going on, but, um, that's part of the problem, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
You're welcome.
We appreciate you being here and appreciate your comments, sir.
You're welcome.
Uh, next, Mr. Robert Curry. Mr. Curry wants to talk to us about the SPOS and Recreation Centers. Mr. Curry? Thank you for being here. You're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Mayor, I'm here as a concerned citizen and a conscious man. We passed SPOS for a hundred and ninety million, two-hundred-and-eighty million, thirty mi- thirty-nine million for recreation, but there's a great disparity of treatment, racism, discrimination, age discrimination, plus location discrimination, and I explain that to you. Since you're the head of the body, I'm gonna leave you in charge of the issues that go before the citizen, but the issue that I have today is I wanna, um, refer that to Commissioner Bibbins. Now Commissioner Bibbins is over the area of Freedom Park and L.H. Williams, which is, uh, Matty Hubbard Jones Playground. Okay, at Freedom Park, that was a gym that was used for Butler Cross, Bayview, Freedom Park, and up and down Napier Avenue. For some unforeseen and unknown reason, that gym was turned into boxing. Okay, well, we say boxing is not a bad thing, but we had two gyms out at Bloomfield that boxing could've went to. When you turn the gym in Freedom Park into boxing, you kill out a nation of amenities for the whole community. Now it's just boxing. So I'm about like, uh, Mr. Richardson here, by doing that, you created crime because the youth have nowhere to go. The children don't even have an inside facility in that area, and you spent thirty-nine million dollars for recreation. You took away the swimming pool, which was a vital thing that they needed to learn how to swim to be safe in water, crucial thing for black children and other poor minorities. Okay, you took away the gym, but then you go down South Bibb County, spend eight million dollars for a building and facilities and amenities, all of the Olympic swimming pool. Olympic swimming pool, mini tennis courts, the whole nine yard. At L.H. Williams, you brought a prefab bathroom in that you say costs forty-five thousand dollars, which probably could've been built for ten, I don't know where the other money went. Says handicap accessible, but handicap, a person with a wheelchair like the gentleman here, he could probably struggle and get in. Now you don't even have a wheelchair ramp, and I've been talking about that for three years over at Matty Jones, Matty Hubbard Jones. That is a, that is a violation of the American Disability Act. So it needs to be some legal, uh, representation for the poor and disadvantaged people to look into the situation, how y'all disparage, treat the people. All right, now at Vine England, Vine England is a predominantly white, uh, baseball outfit. You know, it's ninety-eight percent white. You might have, have two percent black youth that go there. So at Freedom Park, Mr. Bibbin, there's no need for a teenager to go there, unless he box. You don't have no other amenities, can't go outside, inside to get out of, to get out of the weather. Okay? And you don't have no swimming pool there for the youth to learn how to swim. Why is this? I think that's age discriminating. All right, now, very few blacks play on the baseball team, whereas now you went over there and refurbished everything overnight, it's, it looked wonderful. We have no problem with, uh, improvement because improvement's supposed to be for everybody. But yet, when I go through there, the children that live in that area peepin' through the fence looking at the children that don't even live in that area, play ball and stuff, they pack up their bags and go north. It's not right. It's not fair. It's not just. So you took the thirty-nine million dollars, pick and choose where you wanted to do it, and I think that's wrong, Mr. Mayor. I hold you accountable because these are the people that, you the shepherd, they up under you. So go by there and look for yourself. I'm gonna try to get the news media to go over there and put this out so the public can see. A lot of people might not go to that area. A lot of people avoid that area. So a child is a child, like the lady said here, opportunity, but you depriving these children of opportunity to learn how to swim, opportunity to be multi-tasked because you took and turned the gym into boxing. You got forty-three acres of land out there at Bloomfield. Fort, Freedom Park is landlocked. I don't think it's right. I don't think it's fair, but we pay the taxes. Like the gentleman said, you go up on the garbage feed, you went up on the property tax, we voted for the SPOS, we voted for both SPOS. Go in your heart and look out for everybody, Mr. Mayor. We all in this together, one love. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. We appreciate your comments. Uh, Valerie Nguyen is here and wants to talk to us about the special election and budget issues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. Yes, I'm back again, Valerie Nguyen. First, I know the, the special election's a done deal. I just want to say I'm pleased that the citizens of District One will now have the opportunity to vote for a voice on this commission, and that also gives an opportunity for people like me that want to run for that position. Thank you again. I'm glad it's a done deal, and soon it'll be over, and we'll have a voice sooner than later. Uh, now to the budget. I just wanted to just say that that's the topic of discuss, discussion now with citizens, our financial condition of this community, and for the people that have, that pay property taxes, hearing that their property taxes are gonna go in, go up once again, very upset with that. The constituents in our area in District One pay a lot of property taxes, doesn't make us any better than anybody else, but we pay a lot of property taxes in that district, and that's a great concern. Um, it's just like, every time you turn around, the city's spending, and then they want to tax the citizens for what they spent, and we just can't keep putting that burden on our citizens over and over and over again. You know, there are things in the budget that are much greater than what I'm gonna touch on right now, but what I want to mention is the nonprofit, profit agencies and such that we support. I want to allude to what, what Commissioner Lucas said a minute ago about the municipal golf course. You've gotta have the citizens to come here to support that. I agree with and appreciate that comment, because if you don't have citizens supporting these things, they don't make a go of it, they don't work. So you look at the nonprofits of our community, and I think about our community, we are a, we are a community of wealth and generosity, wealth both personally and in both our businesses. Go past Mercer University on their campus, they've got five-star football stadium, they've got the Ortho Georgia baseball field. You've got businesses here that are very supportive of a lot of things in our communities. Our nonprofits, such as the Macon, the, uh, the Douglas Theater, wonderful little theater that I enjoy going to, but, you know, you don't want to give people fish, you need to give them a fishing pole to find out a way to take care of themselves. And I think that they need to think it out and find out how they can get support from the community, do things, have projects, go to those people in our community that would support them, get that funding from them rather than from the city, and ask for that help, and I think this community will come forth and answer that, that call. I don't want it, you know, there's a lot of things in the budget that are coming up that have greater, greater, um, importance, such as pensions and retirements and insurance, and I know those are a big part of the budget, those things have to be. We just got to think outside the box a little bit, how we can work with these things and bring that budget back into control. And if you can bring the budget back into control, if we can, as the leaders, or you can as the leaders, I want to include myself, but shouldn't do that, but as, as the leaders, you can start to get the budget into control, you'll, you won't see people being so, um, adverse to having a property tax increase again of a smaller amount than we're considering now. So I just want to say those comments, a lot of them are coming from citizens that I talked to, and, uh, just wanted to hear, let you hear my voice on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. We appreciate you being here. Next, Shane Mobley wants to talk to us about the OLOS, Mr. Mobley? Thank you, and you're recognized for five minutes. Glad you're here, sir.
All right, I want to, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that and all the other commissioners that are here. Uh, I've known some of the commissioners here for quite some time, uh, Joe Allen, I've known, uh, most of my life. I don't want to reveal his age, but I was a long way from driving a car when I met that man. Um, I also live in District One as well, and, um, I can tell you that, uh, also a lot of people that may know me or may not know me, you know, right now running for District one forty-one, uh, which is Allen Peak's, uh, recently vacated seat. Uh, one of the things that has come up is the OLOS, uh, or any tax, and I have said publicly, I'm the only person publicly that has said that I do not agree with any tax increase whatsoever. I think it's time that the city of Macon gets their finances in order. Now, it may be tough, there may be some tough decisions to make, but I do believe that's gonna be the right way to go. As a District One person, I can tell you, we pay more taxes in that district than any other district in this city. And I can tell you that, you know, there comes a point in time that when we begin to pay a lot of those, uh, taxes, that's one of the things that we don't want to have an increase in our mill. You know, that's one of the things, I think it was increased a year ago, we're talking about now increasing that again, and when you attach the OLOS to that, it's, it almost seems that we either have to vote the OLOS in, or we're gonna have a mill increase. And I can tell you, you know, someone who is my first foray into politics, and like many of you guys up here, I'm already getting a little abused, and I haven't even won an office yet, so I can only imagine what you guys go to on a normal basis, but I could tell you, I've only been out here a few times, but I've been very encouraged by a lot of the people that are out here that care enough. Unfortunately, we don't have a standing room only, and we see a lot of the same people that we come down here and, and talk, but I can tell you that I'm not for any property tax increase, and I would just encourage everyone here to really look at the budget and do some things. Part of my background is in healthcare, and as we stated tonight, the Fitbit thing is great, but the problem is, is how we're gonna monitor programs like that. So I just have concerns when we spend money like that, you know, those, if they break, what's gonna happen? If they're sold, how are we gonna keep up with it? That's a lot of money that I feel like that we can keep when a lot of people were complaining about the special election in District One. And so, uh, you know, I hope to, to fight for that position. I'm primarily financing my own campaign, and, uh, I think I have a, a pretty good chance of winning that spot, and I hope to be able to work with some of you guys on that, but I will never support another tax increase whatsoever, and I'm really hoping that everyone here is gonna stop reaching into the pockets of District One because they can be deep at times and pull out more money to pay for some of this crazy stuff that's going on. some of this crazy stuff that's going on. And I'm really hoping that as we go along in our election in the next few weeks, and you get someone else that's sitting up in the seat up there by Mr., uh, Schlesinger, that I'm really hoping that we're gonna have someone that's gonna fight for our right to not have to have a lot of these increases in taxes. So I know from a legislative body, if I get elected, and I'm gonna be very, very tough to beat, me financing most of my own campaign, I don't owe anyone anything. Nothing. So, with that being said, my pockets are extremely, extremely deep. And I can tell you that my goal is not to just fight for less taxes for OLOS and things of that nature, but it's going to be to fight for every single person that's out here, for people to have the right to have good facilities for people to be in. And for, to make sure as a state representative, as part of the delegation here locally, that when I go to that Gold Dome and I represent Beale County, that I hope that I can go up there, and instead of people saying, "Why do you live there?", I can say, "I'm proud to be here." And I am proud to be in Beale County, but we're gonna have to get our financial house in order. I appreciate your time, I appreciate everybody that does their job here every day, and I know it's not easy to hear a lot of these negative comments, but what I can say is that there's a lot being done right as well. And for the things that you guys are doing right, I can tell you, I sincerely appreciate that. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mobley. Appreciate your comments. Ms. Westbrook, you, you are next, uh, wanna talk to us again about the garbage fee, I You're recognized for five minutes.
I want to thank, uh, the Commissioners for even, um, looking back at our garbage fee, um, um, ordinance. I know, um, I've been following, uh, what's been going on with the ordinance, uh, as far as, um, going back, changing it, looking at changing it from annual to quarterly. But I'm hoping that when you all look back at this ordinance there, you look at some other things also. Um, garbage fee is a service. Um, if you're not receiving services at a, at a, uh, residence, you should not be paying a garbage fee for those services. You have, I, I know there's a provision in the garbage, in the ordinance that talks about, um, people that are below the poverty, uh, guideline, that they can apply for or be exempt, but I don't think there's enough education that's been put out there for people to know about, um, to know about that. Uh, but I'm asking for you all to take a close look at this ord, this ordinance. Um, I, I just don't think that it's legal to attach, um, uh, ordinance as far as when it's garbage fee to a person's, um, taxes, to put it together with his taxes. If they don't pay the garbage fee, then you can levy their home on the courthouse steps. So that should not, it should be separate, that should not be attached to the, uh, ordinance as far as, uh, someone, um, not paying the garbage fee. And if they don't pay it, then they can take their home be, because of a garbage fee. I think there's something needs to be, um, needs to be looked at very, uh, closely. Um, myself, I have two rental properties. Um, one of them, no one has lived in it for, since in two thousand nine. Um, it's livable, but no garbage is picked up there, that's a service. So I should not have to pay a garbage, three-hundred-dollar garbage fee for services that's not being rendered at the address because no one lives there. One of my properties, no one lived there, but, um, I, I, I wrote a letter and stopped the garbage services there. But when the garbage, um, someone lives there now, but when the garbage, when they just, um, voted on this ordinance, what system does the, the, the county have to know whose garbage they supposed to pick up when they, because my garbage still has not been picked up. No one has, do I supposed to call and let someone know that they supposed to start picking garbage up because they're charging me a garbage fee? When I called the county, they couldn't even find, they couldn't even find the letter that I had written years ago to, to, uh, to stop the garbage. So no garbage is still being picked up, and I just paid three-hundred dollars on, about before April the first. So this is something that needs to be really looked at, not just changing the, uh, changing it from a annual fee, from, from, from annual fee to a quarterly fee, the anti-ordinance needs to be looked at. It's illegal to charge people for services that they're not being rendered. Um, I shouldn't have to, no one should have to pay that. And I'm particularly concerned about our senior citizens and our elderly people who are not, really can't afford to pay this, this three-hundred dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. Mr. William, William Morris wants to talk to us about a youth event on the twenty-first. Mr. Morris, thank you for being here, thank you for your patience, recognized for five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you Commissioners. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, Macon, Beale County. It's a blessing to be here tonight with you. Thank you for coming. My name is William Morris, and I am here to discuss with you an event that is taking place this Saturday at the Frank Johnson Community Center, led by the Lois's Kids, which is a non-profit. I want to read to you the members that are part of Lois's Kids. We have Ernestine Brody, who's the founder, who's born and raised here in Macon, Georgia. We have Christian Latimer, we have Leroy and Audrey Jarrell, Marvella Ivory, Donna Hugheses, Jimmy Duggins, and myself, William Morris. Like I said, we are working out of the Frank Johnson Center, which is located on Mercer and Pionono, and it is a one-point-two-million-dollar renovation, it's located in Unionville, and we are blessed to be there. And we've been running programs out of that building for two-plus years. We've done health fairs, we've done pilot simulation programs for young men and young ladies to get interested in becoming a pilot. Also, we are hosting a youth program conference. What is that? What we're doing is, we're giving a platform for all the youth organizations here in Macon, Beale County. We're talking about the Big Brother Big Sister, Boys and Girls Club, and other organizations to inform parents of the opportunities that they have to put their children in quality programming. We all know that we're facing some challenges here in Macon, Beale County, as far as our youth and crime. So we're holding this conference to give people the opportunity to learn what's going on. So that event will be taking place this Saturday, April twenty-first, from ten a.m. to two p.m. And we wanted to put that out there, we wanted to bring that to the forefront. We also were receiving a proclamation at the event to highlight the program, because we all know our youth are the future. Also, as we move into the school year, Lois's Kids will be launching our male programming. The name of that programming is Two G Brothers. What does that stand for? Always a Gentleman, Always Genuine. And the reason we're doing that, because we are targeting third through eighth graders, ninth through twelfth, as well as eighteen-to-twenty-five-year-olds. Why? Because we are in the business of developing leaders, because that's what we need to do. Yes, we want lawyers, doctors, engineers, that's true, but if they're not leaders first, how can they persevere? How can they learn to overcome? So that's what we're gonna be doing. Also, we will empower our young men through motivation, education, employment, and a unified movement. And as I close, I want you to understand who I am. When I speak to people, I always introduce myself because you have a right to know who's standing in front of you. Like I said, my name is William Morris, I've lived here for almost three years, I've taught at Alexander Two, I've taught at Miller, I've also taught at Central High School. And currently, I've done milestone preparation workshops for young people throughout Macon, Beale County. I'm about to have a partnership with Ingram Pie, which is also in Unionville. So, as we move throughout twenty-eighteen, be prepared to hear the name Lois's Kids, William Morris, Jimmy Duggins, Jerome, um, Jerome, I'm sorry, Jerome LaRaele, Christian Latimer, and Ernestine Brody. We are here to make a difference in the lives of our young people and their families in Macon, Beale County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Finally, Mr. George Mohammed wants to talk to us also about the garbage, uh, bill. Mr. Mohammed, thank you for being here, thank you for your patience, you're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Uh, first of all, I want to make a quick point, last time I was here, I was talking on behalf of the Belvedere, Belvedere Manor Weaver Heights community, and, and rectifying a situation where a convenience store was encroaching on the neighborhood, and we needed to get a fence and, uh, some trees planted to protect the neighborhood and, and correct the wrong that was done. Uh, a group of us were here, and I spoke with that group, but in the process, I did not recognize Mr. Al Tillman, who ironically is not here today, and that, he was, I think he was a little offended by the fact that I didn't recognize him, but I do want to recognize that he set up the initial meeting with Mr. Shook Patel to help get that, uh, process in motion. So I'm very thankful to him and to anything that, uh, any of the Commissioners and the Mayor did to help rectify that situation, we're on a better footing right now. Uh, the city-county is strapped for money, and, uh, you know, I cannot, I cannot understand, first of all, uh, downtown, the, uh, parking meters, why we have given that over to the Urban Development Authority for them to take revenue from parking meters when we are, we are cash-strapped as a county. That's the first thing, and I, and that's, that's leading into these issues with the garbage fees and taxes and all that, but that's, a lot of people gonna be parking, a lot of people are parking, and the Urban Development Authority does a lot of good things for the community, but they are not our government. These streets belong to the people of Macon, Beale County, and we should be taking those revenues in. That is something that needs to be corrected. Um, also, as we look at, uh, some of these organizations that, uh, depend on the county, uh, we have institutions, and we have a quality of life that must be maintained for us to have, uh, perpetuate, uh, in generations to come, our children having a quality of life. The Douglas Theater is one of those places, and it's beyond just that little theater that we might need to throw money at, but this is an institution. The, uh, Bowden Golf Course is an institution, and part of the wealth of Macon, Beale County is not just how much money, but these historic places that have offered culture and continue to offer culture and opportunities for development and quality of life for people of all races and all, all ages needs to be preserved, and it's not just something for us to throw to the side. Uh, there is great disparity, and it, and we really need a forum on disparity in this community. I urge the leaders here to call a forum on disparities, disparity is rife in Macon, Macon, Beale County, and the way money is spent, for instance, with the, uh, Grand Opera House, about five million comes out of the splosh, it's coming out of the splosh for the Grand Opera House compared to the Douglas Theater, somewhere around three-hundred thousand, and you can go down the line and find all over where disparity is being practiced, and that is hurting a lot of people. Now, coming to the garbage fees, uh, not only is it, uh, unfair to charge someone for a service they're not receiving, and it's really, to me, it's like robbery, but also, uh, it is, uh, a great problem, a great stress upon people. The poverty is huge in Macon, Beale County, it's something we need to look at as well. A lot of people are impoverished, a lot of people are struggling financially, it's very stressful for them to have a lump sum to have to pay for their properties. Part of it goes back to what Mr. Richardson was talking about, historically, this grab of property, this ownership of property, and this, uh, where certain people have, and then you have these have-nots, and people who maybe have even inherited since slavery time, property, they're trying to hold on to, and you have these taxes, and you have this heavy weight of, of, uh, all these fees that are coming down, people losing property. It's a way of making people lose property. So these are things that need to be considered, we're talking about justice, we're talking about equality, and I urge you all to, uh, really look at disparity, we need a forum, we need a forum on a number of very important issues in this community. Uh, the status of blight, where is, where is the status of the blight spending in these neighborhoods? Where has that money gone that was pledged for each one of those areas? Poverty, transportation, uh, and the road situation, where are we going? People need to be informed, uh, and there are many problems, economic issues, uh, as well, that need to be addressed in this community. But once again, I urge you, uh, really to repeal what has happened, what has been placed upon the backs of the people in terms of the tax, uh, the taxes for, uh, the lump sum spending, the lump sum requirement for property tax, as well as taxing people for a service they're not getting from the garbage fees. I urge you to turn that over, and I urge you also to work with the Urban Development Authority in getting that, those revenues to come to the people to Macon, Beale County for those, uh, parking meters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. Uh, that, that brings us to the end of those that wish to talk to us about a non-agenda You, you should've signed, signed up. Come, come to the podium, please, sir, and, and, uh, identify yourself and tell us what you want to talk about.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, uh, I am Ben Denas, uh, live on, uh, District Five, and the reason I'm here is just to talk about a little bit of, uh, property tax that has been talked, uh, quite some time. Last year, we pay, I paid, uh, over twenty-four-hundred dollars in property tax, and I got a couple pictures here that I can show you guys that on a street, and I've, I've tried to call several times about this issue, but, uh, nobody really is picking up, uh, the phone. So the street is a big potholes where I'm live, um, the bushes are overgrown, um...
Give us your street number, please, sir, so that, an address, so that we can...
Well, the last time I was here, I already did that to somebody, they took a note, uh, I never heard from them.
That's fine, sir, I, I, I just thought we...
But, but I will, I will give you the address. Um, and that's an issue that, that, that's going on, and, uh, I did start a conversation about the property tax increase on my neighborhood, and I have got a really great response about this. Uh, and, uh, I myself oppose it, uh, I got a, uh, experience on the real estate business, and I'm sure that some of you guys might know, uh, real estate business, and the increase in the property value is not the way to go. Uh, sooner or later, we'll catch up with you, the property value will go down, and you guys won't collect as much as you would like to collect, because the property will go down, and cannot raise the tax, uh, every year. And my property address is nine twenty, twenty-nine Captain Kell Drive.
Thank you, sir, we, we'll try to look into the pothole, is the pothole in front of your house?
Correct.
Okay, nine twenty-nine Captain Kell, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir, appreciate you being here. No, no, no other, uh, people wishing to speak, uh, at this point that have signed in, and no points of personal privilege, can I get a motion to adjourn? Without objection, we are adjourned.